Okay, welcome to the study session portion of tonight's meeting. All members are present. We start off with the public forum. We have two speakers for tonight. Mr. Jason Allen.
Good evening Chair Franz and members of the board. Appreciate you once again opening up the floor for feedback from the community. I'm here tonight because I'm exhausted and frustrated and, to be honest, pretty hopeless. Many of you may be aware, but my children do not attend Prior Lake Savage area schools. And I don't say this with a sense of pride or indifference. In fact, I say it with a great deal of disappointment. My wife and I both grew up in this town. We both traveled through Westwood, Five Hocks, Grainwood, Hidden Oaks, and eventually graduated from Prior Lake High School in 1998. We have a long history here. And our hope as a young family, setting our roots in the same soil where we were raised, was to one day raise and educate our children in the very same schools we attended. Unfortunately, it became evident to us very early in our children's education that our hope would not be our reality unless things drastically changed within the district. Sadly, as my son is now a junior in high school and his two sisters are in sixth and third grade, the changes we had hoped to see have neither become a priority for this district nor a reality for us or nearly seventeen hundred other students from within the district who have chosen not to attend district schools. Over the past several years, I've done what I can to try and raise my concerns through the appropriate channels available. I've been active in this community and have never been one to resolve myself to complaining without first making efforts to be the change that I hope to see in others. I've listened to countless stakeholders within this community who are equally frustrated. Together, we have made efforts to engage the school board. We've joined committees, spent countless hours attempting to have our voices heard and welcomed at this table. Unfortunately, those efforts have been little more than exercises in futility and perseverance. We've continued to be brushed off, ignored, shut down, and even lied to by this board. All of this has led to a sense of callousness towards what we see as hollow promises of accountability, transparency, and unity from this district. Teachers from this district have been allowed to stand at this podium and spread disinformation about local liberty groups who are pushing back against district decisions that we see as both distractions and dangers to our children's well-being. Instead of listening and validating and treating our concerns with dignity, members of this board have perpetuated those lies and in some cases even spread them within the district and the community. Our frustration has increased as we see the only board director who seems courageous enough to raise our concerns silenced and bullied in these meetings and elsewhere. I cannot imagine that this is the best this district has to offer, and I hope you take my feedback and criticism to heart. I am not a person behind a keyboard looking for ways to be offended. I'm here, I'm looking you guys in the eyes, and I'm asking you to please consider our concerns and take them seriously. Thank you.
Next is Stacy Buckingham on social media. Sorry, Stacy Buckingham on social media use.
Thank you, board members, and congratulations, Mr. White. Tonight, I want to talk about responsible social media. I know the district recently pulled together a group of parents and citizens whose role is to support the levy and promote it within the community. My concern is that some worrisome rhetoric is being shared by those people that isn't altogether truthful. There was a post today on Facebook that stated that if the levy failed, MinCaps would be eliminated. The district verbiage was that the pathway or pathways maybe, but to state the program would be eliminated is simple fear mongering. This isn't altogether different from the technology levy where we were told we would no longer be able to provide all students with a device, limiting their access to updated devices. This has proved to be false. Many more iPads have been purchased, and I'm almost certain we are still a one-to-one district. As a parent, I want honesty and transparency, and I don't think that's too much to ask. So if we can just somehow figure out the people who are out there talking about the levy, just make sure that they are telling the truth, that they are being accurate with what they are portraying. Because we want all of our community to understand what exactly it is that is on the line or is not on the line. So I just want that to be evidently clear. And, you know, social media is a powerful tool. And I think I still have a couple more minutes, so I just want to put in a quick plug. I would love to see the high schools' eighty-twenty grading system to be reevaluated. I feel like that grading system doesn't promote a strong work ethic with tests being able to be retaken and daily work counting for almost nothing. I know my students have been very honest with me, like, Mom, I don't need to do it. It won't matter because it won't affect my grade one way or the other, so why would I do that work? And that is not something I want my children an attitude to have, and I don't think that is a good attitude for any student to have. So, thank you for your time.
Okay. Next is Oversight of Operations, and I'm going to hand this over to Director Fredrickson for the twenty-two-four, twenty-five enrollment updates.
Thank you, Board Chair, members of the board. I've included, again, you've seen this every month, an update on what our enrollment currently looks like as of September nineteenth, so last Thursday. You can see that we are showing increase in our kindergarten over what we had projected. We have next Tuesday is the official October first child count that we submit to the Department of Education. So, once we have that, we'll have an official number, and then we'll be giving you updates every month and certainly answer any questions.
Director Fredrickson, how does that, the number of eighty-six, twenty-three, how is that compared to last year at the same time period? I apologize, I was going to pull it up, but...
It's on the report that I've shown you. It was eighty...
So it's eighty-six, is it eight oh six oh six?
Yep.
The total, that's, okay, I'm sorry, that's where we were last year as of October first?
Eighty-five ninety...
Oh, eighty-five ninety-three, I'm looking at the wrong year, thank you. So we're up. Couple dozen students.
And again, we'll have that official report that I give you starting October first.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Promising, promising numbers. I think kindergarten's up quite a bit, isn't it?
Yeah, kindergarten is up about fifty kids. We have added some additional support at the schools for those kindergarten classrooms.
Thank you. Anything else before we go on to the board budget priorities? All right, handing this, the board budget priorities, handing this over to Directors Fredrickson and Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Franz and Board Directors. Couple of years ago, we had conversations with the board around some of the priorities that, or values, if you will, from the board that really helped guide the budget conversations. And at the time, it was something new that we were offering you all to consider. And so, we're coming back to you this year to really help frame the conversations that we can have as administration, with staff and with our community. And so, what we have here is just, again, a sample of some things that we feel, we've heard through our work with the board, that you all might want to take under consideration as a priority statement, essentially kind of putting a stake in the sandbox of this is where we want to ensure as we're making financial decisions, particularly developing the budget, these are areas that, you know, you might say as the priority areas are more untouchable, if you will, for lack of a better term. And so, we wanted to reintroduce this conversation with you all to see if this is something that resonates with the board or if you are fine with the process that has been being used moving forward with some briefings, but not kind of putting together priorities as a board for administration to kind of use as a guide. So with that, Director Fredrickson, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that's it. We'll be starting the work in December once the levy is certified and we'll have the October first numbers. So that is kind of the basis of building the budget for next year. And as you know, we've moved up our timeline to try to get a budget approved by February or March. So if we had priorities, we could certainly look at those as we build those budgets, starting in December.
Do we want to go through and discuss them, or how do you want to...
Not necessarily, these are just examples.
Okay, examples, okay.
These aren't something that we're wedded to, but these are just some things that, you know, in conversations that we've had or conversations that we've had as a leadership team where we've seen priorities emerge. And so, if this is a type of document you all would be interested in creating, perhaps this could be some work that the board would engage in or if you wanted to do this as a subset of the board through the exec team. Again, it's something that, you know, it's not required, but it does help us frame conversations with our staff and with our community from a governance standpoint to say, these are the priority areas of the board that, you know, we want to make sure that as we're building out our budget, as departments are looking at, you know, additions or reductions, we want to make sure that they're in alignment with regards to the board priorities. So, and if this is something of interest to the board, certainly it's something that we could entertain, you know, in a variety of different ways, you know, with you all, leave that open to the board.
I think it's very important that we do set some priorities.
Couple thoughts. I appreciate the putting things down in a resolution-type document. When I look at these things, a lot of them mirror what is in our strategic plan. I think if I were to say a concern that I might have is that, you know, I think I've spoken it from the table a lot. When there's multiple priorities, more than three, there, it can just get lost. Now, all of these are different items. I think that the board and the community has supported all of these thoughts. And I think, you know, I'm not against having a resolution, but I think that in using our strategic plan as a living, breathing document for all of the work that we're doing, you know, I would ask, is this doing, is this helping? Is this helping the process? Is this helping to keep us focused on, you know, what the priorities are? We heard loud and clear that, you know, academic achievement is top priority. The four items of our priorities in our strategic plan, academic excellence, optimize resources, having positive learning environments and community partnerships. I see those listed in the, I guess, I see those listed here as an example. My question would be, does both documents need to happen?
Yeah, I can see how you would, it would help administration to make decisions when you know you have certain priorities from the board. I think the tougher conversation is whether we have the money to fund those priorities properly. So when I read, for example, "Enhance innovation programs such as Eastham Dole immersion and gifted education," well, in my mind, if the levy doesn't pass in order to enhance programs like that, it means cuts in other areas. And so, we can do that, you know, those are hard decisions. So it's a matter of how we're going to look at the document, how we're going to use it. I mean, maybe that word becomes maintain, right? Depending on the investment the community wants to make. So those are the things I'm thinking about as I look at this document. I think it would be a helpful tool. I think it might be hard if we're primarily looking at cuts if a levy doesn't pass.
And it's interesting. The very first time I read through this, I thought, do we need to organize this according to the strategic plan? And, you know, Dr. Thomas, when you were at our EQUITY committee meeting last week, you were talking about being the plan, like, becoming the plan. And I think everything we do, we have this wonderful strategic plan, and I think everything we do mirrors it. And I think if we're looking, and I know, pardon me, Director Fredrickson, you were talking about how we won't necessarily do this until December, when we know how November goes. And I think when we know how November goes, oh, my computer just went to sleep again, when we can bucket according to our strategic plan priorities, if we're talking about budget priorities. I would love to see it bucketed that way. And I think it would be easy to talk to when we're in that budget planning process. And I think for members of our community too, I think it would be easy to, there's four buckets, and here are our budget priorities based on how November went. So I think that was my first thought, actually, when I read through, and I know these are sample bullet points, but I really like some of these bullet points, even though they're samples. But organizing according to our strat plan, I think, would be helpful for everyone. Not just us, not just the community, but just, but everybody when we prioritize in that way. So I guess I'm taking what you said, Director Boyan, and kind of furthering it to organizing it in a different way once November hits or passes. When November passes, you know what I mean? When the calendar turns December. How's that?
I just want to, did you say something? Okay, sorry. I agree. I think all of it, all of, anything we do should feed up into the strategic plan. And I understand, you know, some of that does take resources. But also things like respect, unity, those are like soft things that we can be doing that should be built into this plan. And whether it's communication with our parents or, I see, this is all, these are all great examples, but I also think that there's things that we can do that fall under our core beliefs of respect and unity that don't take resources, that we could be doing, you know, as we are here today. And whether that falls back into the profile of the learner that you have mentioned, those are, like I said, those are kind of soft things that I think also could be built into it. But I do agree, everything should funnel into and up to our strategic plan. So I agree with that. And I do think from a timing standpoint, I think waiting until after we see the results of the community's vote in November will give us a real clear idea of where we, what we need to do to be able to build this plan, to be able back to our strategic plan.
My, so this is a budget list, which I, which I think is really, really important. And I, and the only thing that I would say is as we're building out the priorities is that if it's possible, some of the, some of the examples in here, and I understand this is a draft, are broad. And I'd like to see it from a budget perspective be a little bit more mutually exclusive within the bullets. So that as we are trying to use it going forward, that there isn't confusion as to what we're, what we're actually ranking and prioritizing when we do have to make reductions or allocate funds. But as far as the, it does align with our strategic, the language does anyways. And again, as a financial document, I don't think we need to add in the rest of the language that doesn't apply directly to fiscal priorities or budget priorities, I would say, in here. But I would like to see some of the broader statements, such as basically being fiscally responsible, I think, is the overriding one. And then the individual bullets in here would be there's specific ones that would tie to the tasks and the goals that have been developed to actually fulfill the strategic plan.
Chair Franz and Board Directors, I appreciate the push on bringing this back to the strategic plan. And yes, there is great intentionality in our work to ensure that that strategic plan is far greater than a shelf document. So you do see the alignment here, and I think we receive that push because that is something that we are also pushing in conversations throughout the district. I also can appreciate the timing of waiting to see the outcome of November fifth. And based upon whether that's a conversation around making key investments or making key reductions based upon that vote, then I think utilizing what we've talked about in the strategic planning presentations of a task force of sorts that can maybe help frame what this document could look like as a proposal to the board then, as a result of, one, the outcome of November fifth, but then also bring in the details and alignment back to the strat plan and something for you all to consider as you make those investments or reductions accordingly. So, completely understand that, and I think that's a direction that we can, that we can go.
So, Dr. Thomas, other than the feedback you've already received, what other information do you need in order to move forward?
Well, I'll just state, again, this was just a tool that we're presenting as a possible option for the board. This is not a requirement for our work to continue. We are trying to add guidelines into the conversations that we have with our community and with our, with our staff and mirroring that under your purview as board governance budget. So that it helps us have different conversations and say, you know, to the example of whatever the program might be, if this is a value set of the board that we really, the board is saying, yeah, we're seeing the outcomes for this, we want to protect that. If you're making budget reductions, find other areas. That wouldn't be your first go-to area, okay? Now, we might find ourselves inevitably at a space where we have no choices, but from a prioritization standpoint, we can't fund everything. So something's going to give. And from a board governance standpoint, we wanted your input on that as well to say, what are some value propositions you have based upon your experiences, what you hear from stakeholders throughout our community, so that when we're making recommendations through the budget development process, we're mirroring what you're hearing from a governance standpoint, which is a reflection of our community, as well as what we are involved with on a day-to-day through administration. So, again, not necessary, but simply wanted to offer this again, you know, because we hadn't had that conversation in a couple of years. But hearing that feedback, I think we can move forward with a response after November fifth from a timing standpoint. And then, two, from a product or guidance document, perhaps that's something that would be appropriate for a task force to really kind of bring some meat to that aligns that we could bring forward to you all for further discussion, so.
Okay, anything else?
One more question. Excuse me, so, Dr. Thomas is, would that task force be together at that point? And formed?
So, we...
In December?
Well, I think we could put out a call similar to our other committees, yeah. So, timing-wise, we may be able to have perspective on that, but we also have other committees that we might be able to leverage as a bridge to getting there as we think about some of the key priority works. Because as you can, in this document, for some sample, for examples we had in here, some of that information could come from our finance committee, some of that information could come from our teaching and learning advisory committee, et cetera. So we have some existing structures of ways to engage our community and get perspectives on budget development. We do that now in various ways. But this could be something that we could charge eventually a task force that would ultimately bring forth a plan that would be a reflection of the timing of that vote of November fifth.
Thank you.
Can I build on that for a second? We also heard a lot of people that were on the STRATCOM committee express their desire to continue with their work. So I think that would be a possibility to plug into those folks that,
Sure.
you know, didn't take it to the next step of what that means financially.
Anything else? Okay, so, moving on to the discussion, the superintendent's twenty-four, twenty-five, or this basically school year's goals.
District goals.
District goals, the superintendent goals.
I think we're first going to talk about the district.
Oh, district goals, I'm sorry, you're right. Okay, so the district goals, and I'm going to hand that over to Dr. Thomas, yeah.
Yeah, so, thank you Chair Franz and Board Directors. In just a moment, we'll have Dr. Zumbush come forward to talk a little bit about this document. But as a result of your self-evaluation and setting goals for the board, we thought we would crosswalk some of your work with some of the national school board standards to see where does that align? And also, to a couple of your point tonight, and how does your work center around the strategic plan? So we've got this document before you, for your consideration as you consider areas that you would like to focus in on for your own growth and development based upon your reflection, your self-reflection at the end of year last year. So with that, Dr. Zumbush, I'll have her come forward and just kind of walk you through. Again, we were trying to give you a reflective tool to consider. This is something new for the board. Aligning national standards, aligning your feedback to the strat plan, et cetera. So we will kind of walk you through just some thinking. And this may or may not be something you would utilize, but we just thought we'd at least offer that to you all as a board.
Good evening Chair Franz, members of the board. Similar to the previous agenda item, I think this is just an optional tool or a potential conversation starter. We took the strategic plan. As you know, our department continues improvement plans and our school continues improvement plans have all been mapped onto the strategic plan. Those will be public facing soon. And just in the spirit of continuing that alignment, we kind of took a first crack at aligning the national effective characteristics of a school board. This, again, is just a first attempt or a potential tool. It's nothing required or needed to be used. I also think that as you look through the eight characteristics, you could potentially map them onto multiple different pieces. This was just a first attempt at, you know, based on the process that we're going through with departments and schools, this would be our first attempt at kind of mapping those onto the strategic plan. So again, just an optional conversational tool if you would like to try and better unravel where the different priorities are aligned to effective school board characteristics.
I think this is really well-done and really helpful as we will be bringing on new board members in January. I think it'll be a great tool. I think there's a, my bias is that there's a misunderstanding for what school boards do and are right now. And I think this is a great example to tie the work back to our core strategic plan and keep our board behavior and roles in the space they need to be. So, thank you for your work on this. It's really effective, in my opinion.
I think if you do continue to have conversations and you see it slightly different than the way this is and you find it to be a useful tool, we can definitely rearrange it or, you know, put different alignment pieces together. Again, this was just the first attempt at it. So I think based on your conversations, if you see a different alignment, some of them are kind of fairly straightforward. I mean, it's talking about accountability-driven and that kind of, you know, there may be ones that are a little more straightforward and others that are maybe a little bit of a, you know, maybe a little bit more of an attempt on our part to find that connection. I actually think they mapped on really easily. So, again, if you see something differently than the way we have it, we're happy to continue to evolve this document as it's helpful for you.
Just one of the questions that I would have Directors Zumbush is, what are the next steps?
Yeah, I think it's an optional piece that if there is an interest in talking about, you know, specific goals for the board and how the work of the board might map onto our strategic plan and how we might see the alignment of board goals and district goals. So I think if there is a desire to set board goals, that this would be a way to map your board goals onto our strat plan as we are with everything else. So I think that's a board decision if you're interested in developing and setting those goals.
And Chair Franz, I would just say, I believe it was, and forgive me, And Chair Franz, I would just say, I believe it was, and forgive me, just a couple of meetings ago, but I think it was your first and last goal of your self-evaluation.
Number one and five.
Oh, one and five, okay. That were kind of your areas of focus that night. And so if those are the two areas that as a board you said, yeah, this is where we want to focus our development, then this helps you begin to see where that may align with national standards as well as our strat plan. But at the end of the day, the next steps are for you all as a board to determine where you want to make your investment of your development based upon goal areas one and five. That would be the next steps. And however we can support you in that, just let us know. And again, this is just one attempt to try to find some ways to align and kind of pull up a bit to the standards level versus kind of getting caught in some of the minutia of the language of the rubrics and things of that nature. And just go move, everything has gone towards a standard-based evaluation process these days. So we just thought that might be something of benefit for you all, so.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I think it's, you did a good job, and I like how you put this all together. My only, this is for the 24-25 school year, correct? Or is it as of January? I'm trying to get an understanding of the timing.
That would be up to the board. That's up to you guys, when you set your goals.
Living document, probably.
Mm-hmm. It's supposed to be the 24-25, so the, when we did our evaluation and then we did our retreat normally with the numbers that we come off with, we set our own goals and what we want to focus on. And then, again, we look at it and we work on it through the year, and then we look at it at the end of the fiscal or school year, the school fiscal year, I should say, which is June 30th. So that's why I'm kind of wondering, since we started that process, the next steps is, like Dr. Thomas said, would be to map numbers one and five into here and then come off with the goals that we want to work on through the year. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that's, that makes sense to me. I think we were, in terms of the state-level rubric, we were lacking a little specificity on some of the details of those, of that scoring rubric. So that's why we turned to the national standards as a, as a crosswalk exercise. But yeah, I think that would, that would make sense. And I do think goals one and five are in here. They're just phrased a little bit different from the national standards. I just felt like it was a little bit clearer to pull out the national standards versus disentangle what was in the state standards. I, as we've been going through department and school planning, it is a little bit of a challenging timeline, and I think based on, you know, Director Herman, Director Fredrickson and their timeline for human resources and budgeting, I think the goal for school improvement plans and department plans would be earlier as well. It was challenging this year with the strat plan being approved in June to get all of those plans mapped onto the strat plan. But my goal would be for next year to have a much earlier cycle for all of the plans, but it just was a little bit delayed this year because of the strat plan approval and rollout process. So I think having all of these goals set previously, I'm also kind of guiding schools and departments to say, work that you've done between July 1st and now is still stuff that can be entered onto these goals. I know that the study session where you all talked about this was in that time, timeframe. So I think capturing work that has been done up until this point of the fiscal year, it makes sense as well.
Because we do the MSBA review, and like you said, those are the state, and they have the same questions, would this end up not using the MSBA at the end of this year since I don't think they have any plans on changing, and obviously you're saying these are the nationals? So I'm just trying to understand the substance of what we're aiming towards.
I mean, I think the, Dr. Thomas corrected me if I'm wrong, the rubric would still be the state rubric. This just, it just didn't have the level of specificity of what each of those, like one through five, meant. I'm happy to go down that, if you feel like that is easier, I'm happy to go down that road as well and try and figure out a little more detail on what is in those. It just, we were not able to pull those out at this time. So it would take a little more digging to do that, but I do think that the MSBA and the national standards are also aligned. So we could, yeah, we can go down that route if you think that would be easier.
I'm just kind of wondering if the board would want to crosswalk between those, between this and what we're going to be evaluating ourselves on in the language. So we have a, some sort of a, I call it a crosswalk, but some sort of a mutual definition so we're all on the same page. I'm not sure, and I'm not sure if I'm interpreting what you just said correctly either, so.
So if I may just weigh in just a bit here. So in the past, when you all have done your end-of-year self-eval, and correct me if I'm wrong, you haven't set explicit goals for yourselves as a body.
Right.
Okay? And so what we were attempting to do with the passage of the strategic plan and to what many of you continue to hear us talk about breathing life into that, how are we aligning things back to that plan? And again, as the governing body of the district, you model what to expect throughout the district. So if the board has not set goals for itself, I think the question is then how are expectations cascaded throughout the district? And there's different ways of doing that. Obviously, I would just state that irrespective of the rubric, whether it's the state rubric or if it's a national standards-based rubric, your goal areas really are the strategic plan. You're a reflection of the community. You are an elected body of the community, and the community has spoken where their priorities are. So I would encourage the board, as you think about your goal area, I'm sorry, your areas of one and five, or at least this year, you know, throughout the 24-25 school year because come January, there would be a different composition, and they can talk about subsequent years moving forward. But for this year, how do you align goals one and, or your areas of focus of one and five to one of the four strategic priorities that the community has already declared as the priority work for the district? That's probably the easiest approach, and then allow the board in January to work through its process for developing a either completely revised process, still keeping the strat plan, I would hope, at the center, because that is the community's, I mean, they've spoken, and again, as elected officials of the community, it is the plan, which is why Dr. Zombush shared with you, part of my growth goal area was to completely overhaul our accountability system around goal-setting to align with what the community has declared as the priority and that the board has passed as a strategic plan. So everything's funneled back to one of the four. And there are certain areas where it will be very easy to do that, and then some departments will have to, you know, modify how they approach because maybe as a transportation or as operations or transportation, I don't have a direct correlation maybe to academics, but we also understand that there are some connections there, and we've helped support those as well. And so that's what I would encourage you all to consider with those one and five areas. And if we can support mapping it back to the four core priorities, we can certainly do that as we've been supporting other departments and schools with the same essential, same goals.
And I think the national standards did a really good job of showing what it looks like for a school board to be effective in a particular area, which is, again, I feel like a little bit more actionable than just saying, and this is what we're trying to get away from as a district as well, we can set goals all day long unless we have some clear understanding of what it looks like or what's going to change. You know, there's, in my opinion, not really a huge benefit of setting a goal. You have to have an actual idea of what that would look like to be different. So again, that's just, I think this lays out, the national standards lay out really well what it would look like, and I think taking that and having a conversation of what it would look like here would make sense as well. This was just laid out more clearly, in my opinion, of how to show what is an effective, you know, implementation of each of these pieces.
Right. When we were doing our self-evaluation, multiple people said, I'd love to see those questions again, because as you were going through the evaluation, you didn't really know what you were answering and tying it to.
Yeah.
So even if you had this document in front of you while you were answering those questions, you might be able to try to solve, how to put it in the same language. So, and knowing that we'll have trans, you know, new board members, I know that would be a really hard ask. I think, when do we do that evaluation? In May?
Well, anytime between June and July. We just have to do it once a year, and we usually do it after or during the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, like June, July.
Yeah.
So it would be helpful to have something prepared. So I appreciate this.
So you are asking her to do what I refer to as the crosswalk? That's what, that's what I'm kind of getting at the wheel of the board here.
Yeah. My only feedback is, is if academic excellence was at one of the highest priorities of our, of our community, if I'm reading this correctly, I only see one arrow going to academic excellence. And when I look at the top right of the document, and it says, effective boards are data-savvy. They embrace and monitor data even when the information is negative and use it to drive continuous improvement. My mind sort of goes back to those student outcomes. And so the presentations that we receive on like MCA updates and whether it's bridging the gap, bridging the achievement gap. And so that arrow to me feels like it should really be pointed to academic excellence because the data helps us as a board to drive decisions on how we can support academic excellence. So that would be one of my only feedbacks on that. And then also looking at these data points to see, you know, what other areas support academic excellence versus just the one, that's the one bullet point.
Well, it looks like on some of them, there's multiple.
Let me say one, they're going to academic excellence.
Two, I mean, but two go to optimize resources, right? So you could tie.
Yeah, and again, I think there's different ways of looking at it. It was just kind of a first attempt. I think from what I'm hearing you say, Director Atkinson, is another way of looking at this would be to take academic excellence, since that's our key priority for this year, and take different characteristics and say how those do impact academic excellence. So I think that's a similar exercise with just a slightly different take on it, and I think that makes a lot of sense. I think, again, with eight effective characteristics, it doesn't make sense to focus on all eight because that's too much. And when we're doing our goal-setting, that would not be advised. And so I think, you know, narrowing it down and understanding how it feeds back to the strat plan. Again, this is just kind of a conversation starter for, or tool, optional tool for you to use. But I think identifying a couple of the characteristics and how they feed into academic excellence would be another way to go about it, for sure.
And truly understanding that, you know, our role as board directors, it's really governance, policy, and budget. And those are really the decisions that, when we're making those decisions, how do they impact our students' ability to achieve?
Yeah, I think, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, some great points are being made around, well, first and foremost, I'll just reiterate, you know, there's a lot of work the board does and staff do all the time. We're prioritizing what we're going to lift up as a way, as a means to demonstrate our effectiveness in a specific area. We're not here to boil the ocean, even with the eight. You know, as you'll see with MSBA and the superintendent eval, it says pick no more than two or three, you know? Doesn't mean that I'm not doing work in all these other areas, or that the board's not doing work in all these other areas. We're just saying, here's what we're going to highlight, because based upon how we assess ourselves or how you assess yourselves, sorry, as a board, this is where we feel we have an opportunity to grow. And it aligns this way to this particular priority. And if that, you know, one priority is where you really want to focus and how your work is around the conditions for allowing that priority to come to life, based upon your vantage point of budget, policy, et cetera, then that's where you all go, you know? That's how aligned things need to be to kind of make sense versus just checking a box, for lack of a better term, for lack of a better term, or going through the exercise of goal-setting for nothing.
A thought that I had was, first of all, thanks for mapping this out. I do think it's a great tool, a great conversation starter. Just in listening to everyone speak, one of the thoughts or questions that come to mind is, okay, we gave ourselves as a board the one and five that we want to focus on. This is another tool. When we are building our cohesion as a board, working to, you know, work more effectively, which we know increases our students' success if the board level is operating at its highest level. I'm wondering if this is something where, at a board retreat, we can actually use this and, and schedule the retreat over just exercising this and, and hopefully working to meet some of the goals. I just feel like we can all read this individually. We could even have conversations outside of the boardroom together, but it's really together that we have to, the board has to come together and, you know, work on the things that we've decided to work on, not getting lost in all eight things, which, you know, which they're all great, but, you know, how are we going to address things that maybe are more pressing for our board working in its most effective manner? So that's my thought, my question, my, my thought is that scheduling a board retreat to just work on this together as a board, I think could go a long way.
I think it's a board retreat discussion. I, I mean, I could give examples. I don't need to.
Right.
And one other thing that I'd like to say is, thank you for giving us that book. I'm halfway through it. There was another book that we, that I purchased from the MSBA conference that Dr. Thomas and I attended on student achievement leadership for increased student achievement. And so I am really appreciating having some of that. I think that we all have that book to lean on for examples and things to help us work better as a board team.
And thank you for that. And I'll get to our Director White a copy of that book as well, so.
Awesome.
Get caught up real quick.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and I would agree. I think a retreat is a really, is worthy of the time that, that is, you know, to put into this versus just a conversation. So I am fully supportive of that, supportive of that as well.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the question again. Do you want to go, you know, we, we had a retreat originally scheduled for October. I don't believe we still have one on the books. No, we do not. Okay. So we can send out potential dates, but I'm going to ask a question again. Do we want Director Zombush to do anything to help us prepare for that conversation?
My only, my only suggestion would be concentrating on areas one and five, what we had already determined. Just giving us something to focus on at first, because at least what, I'm only going to speak for myself, but what happens to me when I'm looking at eight things, anything more than three, and my brain says, sorry, it's too much. I can't focus on it. And we, as a board, already said one and five is our priority. So if you could, you know, assist in that form, in my opinion, that would be helpful for me.
And is it helpful to get the questions back from what we answered for MSBA to one and five? Is that, I mean, is that, can we get those? I mean, I don't, we should have them.
I'm sure you have access to it.
Well, the, the- Well, the, the form that was, that was given to everybody was handed out. So we have those. What we don't have is the actual physical questions, because it was synthesized by the MSBA for us.
Right.
I know you have access to that.
I don't.
You don't, I don't either. So, but I'm sure we could probably get it from the MSBA, if that's, if that's the direction of the board.
Prepare for a board retreat. That's what I would do.
And I would just add to that chair that because you used the MS, you used MSBA's rubric, and I'm sure they have supported boards in the past at retreats for goal setting of how to do that. They might be the primary guidance on this retreat. Dr. Zombush could certainly be there as kind of day-to-day support, but maybe help, I mean, they, that's what they do. And so could that be, and it's their tool. So maybe start there with their tool and their process that they've utilized in response to the outcomes of their tool. Because Dr. Zombush doesn't have all the mechanics behind the scenes of what they do, because she's not part of your evaluation. But certainly could be a part of, to understand the process that they use, and then maybe be our in-house support for the direction you all want to go as you develop that.
It was pretty easy to do. We just connect you with the MSBA, and they'll give you that information.
I'd like to limit the amount of time that she puts there.
Yeah.
I would recommend MSBA be the facilitator. She would be your.
Resource.
Resource.
And I think too, just, I mean, for our, I think all of us can figure out our goals and attach it to our strat plan, even though we appreciate, we appreciate that. But I agree with Director Burnick, that as much as we can limit the ask, if we're using MSBA's guidelines, we should go there first.
Well, they're not really guidelines. It's just basically the rubric and the questions. So that's pretty easy asked for MSBA to be able to get that. So we have the detail breakdown. And then we do have to kind of map it, because the language used here at the national level, as well as with our strategy, is different. It's, it is, it's different. I mean, it's got some overlaps, but it's different. So what we don't want to do is spend a lot of time with definitions.
Right.
We'd like to get that kind of worked out. With the board's permission, I can call the MSBA and get those and see just the workload that may be involved, because I'm not quite sure what it's gonna be. I don't, we don't have access to the detailed questions ahead of time. But I don't think it's changed in the last couple of years, so I don't see any reason why they couldn't get us those. And, and then start the process and just see what's really involved.
Well, and I think I'm hearing, to inquire about if they facilitate a workshop as well.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
The MSBA does facilitate a workshop to understand the results of our survey, and it does cost.
Yeah, I understand. But also with goal setting, is what I was hearing, or?
That's, actually, that's the output of, so if we were, so in the past couple of years, we've kind of cut costs and not have the MSBA do it, and we've been doing it ourselves. But what they do afterwards is they help synthesize it and gives those goals to improve the numbers. So it's all part of the same process. Do we want to spend board money to have the MSBA come in and facilitate the review of those?
I would say only if they help us tie it to our specific.
Yeah, that's gonna, I, I'm, I'm gonna guess. I don't know for sure. We haven't asked them, but I don't.
I think, yeah, I think we could get the questions to give us more substance around one and five, and we as a board can work to agree, how does that align to the document you just created? And we could do that in professional development. I think we're, you know, that's being fiscally responsible. It's tied to our strategic plan. I think we're capable of that as a board.
So doing that ourselves?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at. And any prep to get, so let me go back to the original question. Is there anything you want to have prepped before we go into that retreat? Because we just go in with.
Questions from MSBA.
So it's just the question with the MSBA and what the document is here?
And then probably the minutes from, which we all have access to, from the meeting that, where we discussed.
July meeting or August meeting?
Where we talked about.
The retreats.
Our evaluation.
Your self-evaluation.
Yeah.
We have those.
We have those. Okay, yeah. Okay, good. Okay, just want to make sure.
Where we zeroed in on one and five.
Okay, okay. So the next steps are, schedule a retreat, get the, get the actual detailed questions from the MSBA. And then as a board, we will work through the mapping of that and focusing on if we still want to focus on one and five. That, synthesize it?
Yep.
Okay.
I had one, one question about this. In terms of timing, we're talking about, we're talking about goals set for the board now, and not in January. And I don't, I, I think it would be a decent exercise to do once we had a new board in place, because they're coming in under goals that they, we, we all inherit goals from the previous board. I understand that. But I just, you know, in terms of timing, with everything else we have going on in our district, I think I'm not in a rush, personally.
Okay, so the only thing I want to add to that is, you know, it, it's just that when the new board comes in, in January, by the time they ramp up, it's almost time to do the Board of Val. And I will be honest, in all my years on the board, how many people put NA, I don't know, on any Board of Val, because they don't have enough experience in order to answer that. Is it fair for them to start with a blank sheet of paper, almost, even though we have the previous Board of Val? And that's something that, you know, I can't answer. But it's something just to think about. And that's, that's, that's what goes through my mind.
Yeah. No, completely fair point. Completely fair point. I just, I'm looking at the calendar.
I agree, time is, time is hard.
It's kind of goofy.
But I also agree coming in.
Next week being October.
I think when you come in, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, even if you start gathering the information, we're putting the other tools, whether we use them, as if we can get a retreat in November, December, or even if we just have the tools for the next board to understand where we were headed.
Okay.
Trying to align our goals with our strategic plan, first and foremost.
Yes, which we would do anyway.
It would allow a precedence for the, for the next board, too.
Yeah. And also keep in mind, Director White, I don't believe will be on-boarded until October 28th. Is that the?
Swearing out.
We would want to do it after that.
Well, we wouldn't want to do it in the middle of October, because it wouldn't be fair to him.
Knowing this tool exists, and we all appreciate this as a guide.
Yeah, and just remember, team, your work started July 1.
That's what's on my mind, too.
You're not just starting to do work at the board in October.
Right, right.
You know, so just keep that in mind and give yourself some grace there. You do want to set, you do want to have something in play in response to what you all told yourselves this past summer. That has nothing to do with a new board. That has everything to do with this board and its opportunity to do right by itself. So I know the timing might seem a little off. That's fair. But your work, you launched in July 1.
Okay, so we'll continue on with that direction and setting up a retreat, getting the MSBA questions. And then I can work with the agenda and then send it out for feedback. So before we actually do that, and before the future Director White joins the board, then we can discuss it, discuss what we'll be actually doing. Plan?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is what I thought we were jumping to when I confused the language, is the superintendent goals.
So I'm going to start with the document at the bottom. It's the Superintendent Eval Resource Guide, which is the red MSBA. It's that big book. Not gonna obviously go through the big book. But if you recall, after my first year of being here, the evaluation system for the superintendent was linked to a job description, and it was also linked to a pretty big dog and pony show, that I'm sure you all really relished in that one-hour presentation. I think it was even longer. But the feedback that you all had, and I also could attest to that, was I don't know if that was really an effective process. And so I had asked my second year for you all to consider aligning back, or going towards the MSBA standards-based evaluation process. And that was something that you all agreed to do that second summer. And so we aligned everything to the MSBA standards-based model. And so I just shared this resource guide for a refresher for you all to come back to. That was something that you all had back then. So I'm not gonna obviously spend time with that. But the second document from the bottom then gets you to the Sup Eval Resource Guide dash Rubric. And that is the MSBA standards and the elements and rubric. So you'll see all the, similar to what Dr. Zombush was saying, there are standards for superintendency in the state of Minnesota. And you'll see those eight standards listed on the left-hand column. And then you have a series of elements that are described in that rubric as well. And then down below, for every standard and the elements, you'll see the standard rubric of effective, developing, ineffective, not applicable, for every single one of those. Okay, so it's a very comprehensive, standards-based tool. Now, MSBA also says you're not gonna go through every single one of these, obviously, right, in, in the course of the year. Not that work doesn't happen across the board in all eight domains, but you center on two or three. Last year, I think I centered on two. This year, I'm proposing to center on three, based upon the scope of the work that's germane for the school year. And then you select elements within those standards. Okay, so that's that whole running document, just so everyone understands that. Then when you go to the first document, I think, in Board Book now, I will apologize, in the transferring from Google Docs to this format, something didn't, something didn't work out right. I think, I will own that, so I apologize about the confusion of that document that's uploaded. I'll make sure that we get that corrected and upload that back into Board Book in an appropriate format. But I'll walk through the first several pages, and then I'll just then explain the mid-year and end-of-year aligned to the MSBA Superintendent Eval standards. So in the, in that first page, it's entitled Superintendent Performance Expectations 2425. You'll have, and what I've done is I've cross-walked this with our strat plan. So Strategic Plan Alignment Goal 1, provide strategic leadership that optimizes resource, resources. So that's, that's our strat plan. Minnesota Standard or MSBA Standard 2 is where I'm choosing, proposing to focus, and that's around school district finances. And then below, you'll have MSBA elements. Those are all the possible elements that exist in the, in the rubric. I have identified some progress indicators, as well as some artifacts that would be illustrative of things to use to make determinations on progress. And then the chart below, and again, I know it shows up kind of funny and it's split pages, so we'll get that cleaned up. It goes then into the rubric under the elements that I focused in on. And so the elements that I'm focusing in on are budget development and maintenance, bond and levy campaigns. Obviously, that makes sense, given where we're at right now, that, that would be the focus around the finances. Okay, so that's the general format for all three goals. The second goal that I'm proposing to focus on is aligned to strategic goal of leadership that fosters community partnerships. I believe that's our fourth one, but it's my second goal here, listed here. Our Minnesota Standard, Superintendent Standard 3 falls under the standard of communication and community relationships. And then you see all the MSBA elements, again, progress indicators, some examples of evidence. Again, nothing illustrative here. This, or this is just illustrative, not exhaustive. And then you'll see the rubric. And then within that rubric, you'll see the elements that I've identified. Relationships with the community, engagement, and then 3F, which is visibility and approachability. And then the last goal that I'm proposing is Strategic Alignment Goal 3 for me, which is our first priority in, in the strategic plan, provide strategic leadership that strengthens academic excellence. And again, there's no rank order to this. This is just how I'm following the MSBA model. Minnesota Standard 6, Teaching and Learning. You'll see the elements there, indicators, evidence, and then the rubric below. The elements I'll be focusing on is school improvement, curriculum instruction, and a culture of cooperation. So, so that's the general form. Now, this is where it begins to break apart. And so I apologize about this. But if you scroll down to the end-of-year eval, if, if you can scroll, end-of-year summative form, this is essentially the mid-year form as well, according to MSBA. One area that's missing under the comments section is evidence of progress. And then there would be comments. And so that would be the mid-year. And then the end-of-year summative looks exactly the same, except there's summative comments at the very end, which you saw some of that at the end of this year's rubric. Over the past year, what best illustrates the superintendent's greatest strengths and why, greatest challenges and why. And then how might the school board enhance the superintendent's strengths and assist in overcoming some of those challenges? And then the comments that I would submit each year as well. So that's, so that middle part for the mid-year somehow got really truncated and chopped up. So it's exactly like the summative, except those four questions are not part of the mid-year. Only the comments and evidence of progress to date, that mid-year feedback point. So, so forgive the formatting. I own that. We'll get that corrected. I don't like working in Google Docs, but it's the best way that we can do the shared document. But my three goals are, would, would remain, they stand on, on those goal areas. And it aligns to, obviously, what's happening with our financial state right now, given the fact that one of our core values, I think, Director Atkinson, you talked about some of this earlier, our core beliefs of unity, and how I'm gonna help my leadership bringing this community back together around key aspects of what's best for our kids and, and all of our stakeholders. And then obviously, curriculum instruction, with the REACT being the thing to be doing in Minnesota, as well as our new investment in alignment with our middle school math, and the successful continuation and bridging of our elementary math that we implemented, the Bridges curriculum. So makes sense for those three areas for me to focus in on for my goal development as a superintendent. So I share that with you all for any thoughts and feedback from the board. Mine is to clean up a format that I'll do.
You had stated that this, your goals as listed in, in our, in this document, there's no, it's not prioritized, correct?
Yeah, there's no rank order. I'm just following a format of MSBA's document. And so even though our first academic, our first priority is academic excellence, it just, it's not listed last here as, it's just one, two, and three goals. That's all it was. Because how it landed in the MSB format, that's how, that's what came first, in terms of competency. And that was listed as number three.
I appreciate the, the breakouts of the elements, what that might look like. I appreciate the progress indicators, because we want to be able to measure it. And, yeah, so just in my commenting on, or reiterating what you commented, that there is no order in that, it feels like, to me, the academics should be on top.
And certainly I can flip that. On paper, that's totally fine.
I think that, for me, I don't know whether, that's, it's here nor there, as long, but I think that what happens is, whether it be a community member looking at it, or a board member, I think just keeping them kind of how. board member, I think just keeping them kind of how our strategic plan flows and all that, I think is just helpful because it's consistent, it doesn't create confusion or wonderings that don't need to be there.
Totally, totally understand.
So that would just be my thoughts on that.
And if I could just clarify to your point, Director Bullion, and again, open for the public so they understand, in the MSBA rubric, in the, in the state competency standards for superintendents, the sequential list, again, there's no prioritization, I'm sure, for them, as well as governance team, school district finances, communication and community, school district operations, so that's like one, two, three, four, so that's all I was following was what was in the. So there's no prioritization for me, other than what we know rose to the top in our community, and, and that's academic excellence. That is a priority. And, and so can easily flip that around to have that on the top, so that, at least perception-wise, if nobody understands context or listens to this conversation, they see.
Yeah. I think that would be very helpful to everyone.
Fair point.
And then my only push with the progress indicators is that, under a bullet point regarding the new middle school curriculum.
Yeah.
So superintendent will ensure new media school curriculum is implemented with fidelity, which feels to me like sort of a baseline of core responsibilities. But how do we ensure that that curriculum is effective and that it is, you know, ensuring that students are reaching their highest potential? Like, is there something that you can add to that, so that it's?
We can, I can definitely operate, like, so the bullet points that you see under progress indicators, that's where I can get more granular with actual data goals. So that's something, if, if that's, if you're good with that, then that's where I can enhance some of those areas as well. So obviously, we want our students to be performing. You know, where I sit and where you might sit, you know, where, we don't, we don't, we don't teach in the classroom, but we create those conditions for teachers to be able to be effective in the classroom, so we can develop like, smart goals around that aspect of it, for sure.
And if I, if I can add to that, I think when we're looking at the mid-year, that's as one thing, like, this is happening. But if you look at the year-end, there's more like highly effective, effective developing, so there's a little more meat there.
And part of, I think, that question gets addressed when we do our quarterly presentations. And so those are some other areas that we're going to be pulling in data points to show how is it going to date, and some of our areas of focus when we do our Laker Showcase, et cetera. So there's ways that we can bring in here. I just kind of gave you some areas of, you know, places where we might be able to pull data from, but certainly, there's a lot, there's, there's many. There are many.
And then I just wanted to also call attention back to, and I remember when we were doing your evaluation, and Director Olsted did such a great job of doing the write-up and just like where you spend your time and like keeping that in mind as you're going through this, which I'm sure you did. But as an out, as an output of that evaluation, is that all being considered as you're writing these goals for the next year as well?
I appreciate that, and I'll say, for those of you who are at the back-to-school kickoff, this is something that I actually share publicly with all staff in the district. They understand the feedback that the board has given to me because that feedback is where I want our staff to help hold me accountable as well. So they know where my goals are, based upon the end-of-year feedback from the board, and I'm openly sharing that with every staff member every single year. And that's been a practice I've done since my second year, because I didn't have the feedback the first year when I kicked off. So that is, that is something that helps me stay grounded in the work, so they know that as well.
One thing that stood out with me, you have a couple of different places. There're MSBA elements, but you have, or MSBA has media, magazine articles, things like that. I just, I don't want you to be judged on something we don't have here in our community, even though there's broader Twin Cities media, but here in Prior Lake Savage, we do not have media. So I just, and I don't know what, that's an MSBA element, and I realize that's kind of a standard thing for them, but we don't have that. So I don't want you to be, I guess, nicked for not being in media or having magazine articles, and we don't have.
Yeah, well, and we, and we do, actually. So we, we do have various journals that we run regular columns in. We do have items like through our public notices, we will have media, online media come January. So there are some outlets that I'm act, active in, in terms of getting our story into our community in absence of a paper, for example.
Yeah.
So it's not exactly maybe what media might be associated with, like Channel Five or Nine or Eleven or something like that, but we do have outlets that we publish in on a regular basis, so. But I, I appreciate that observation too, Director Olsted, is that we're, we've ported over the rubric from MSBA as it stands. There are nuances, obviously, to each local level. I, I defer to you all's professionalism to understand that some of this will make perfect sense, and some of it may not apply based upon the context or access.
Right. And anything.
Appreciate that, and anything, so I know I appreciate.
Media is a broad term, right? So it can be a lot of different things.
Could be a lot of things.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
The one feedback that I had is I know that during the first mid-year going into the final year, I was looking for the input from you to respond to the questions on what you did, and that was not available on the online one at the end of the year. So I'm hoping that what you just added, or what you talked about with the actual evidence is, is now will be available.
Some aspects, and we can upload some of that, yeah. So there will be artifacts for you all to review at your leisure, but it'll be things that will demonstrate where I believe, you know, I have addressed, or it might be an example of media, it might be something uploading of a column, or something like that, that we produced, to keep our community informed. Or it might be some of the agenda presentations or minutes from my civic involvement with a variety of different groups that are allies and supports to our district for our kids. So absolutely, you'll have some artifacts that you can peruse, and you will also have your own, you know, as well. I, I certainly won't cover everything like we did that first year, but definitely we'll have some in there.
Okay. And then next steps on this, cleaning up the format, so.
Definitely clean up the format. We'll get that done by end of week, so that it's all good to go in Board Book for you all, but then I'll email it directly to you all as well, so you have that. Because getting out of Board Book might get wonky, so I'll just give you the clean raw file data, so it doesn't transfer over funny, so you'll see that in a, in a very clean fashion.
And then I'm encouraging all board members to actually read through the detail here and understand it, and ask any questions ahead of time, because we will be voting on this at the next board meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have some proclamations, and we've got quite a few of them. So I'm actually going to start with Director Olsted, oops, but Director Olsted to read the first one, which is the Human Resources Appreciation Week.
Human Resources Appreciation Week, September 23rd through 27th, 2024. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes September 23rd through the 27th, 2024 as Human Resources Appreciation Week. Our human resources staff play an essential role in the success of our students by recruiting and retaining a high-quality staff. This week, we share our thanks and gratitude for these crucial staff, whereas National Human Resource Professional Day is celebrated on September 26, 2024, whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 6.5 human resources staff, whereas human resources staff support our more than 1,300 Prior Lake Savage Area Schools staff through handling benefits, contracts, employee wellness, policies, professional growth, and additional services. Whereas human resources staff work to support the selection and retention of a high-quality workforce, so we can fulfill the mission of our district and the success of our students. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' human resources staff for their work supporting all employees, and ultimately, the educational needs of our students, and proclaims September 23rd through 27th, 2024 to be Human Resources Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. I would like to just take a few moments to brag a little bit about the team that I get to work with on a daily basis. For me, it really helps to quantify things, and while we support over 1,300 employees, about 950 of them being benefit-eligible, that includes over 60 contracts. And some highlights from last year, we worked through an extremely difficult year with our health insurance vendor supporting over 100 employees or systematic, system-wide issues that led to us having to make a vendor change mid-HITA process, which was a ton of work, and our team did an amazing job helping our employees through some pretty substantial health insurance concerns that were very vital to get right as soon as possible. In addition to that, navigating some significant legislative changes over the last two years, including Earn, Sick, and Save Time, changes to unemployment insurance, navigating changes to the teacher's licensure tiered system, probationary and tenured statutes, added reporting requirements through Pelsby, added reporting requirements to bargaining units, professional development training, like paraprofessionals, REACT, that's just to name a few. There are quite a lot more. And then in addition, on top of all of that, and the regular work they do on a daily basis to support our 1,300 employees, for the last six months, they've been going above and beyond, putting in countless hours to dedicate and to make sure that the transition to Skyward goes as smoothly as possible coming up in October. They have spent and cleaned up over 24,000 data fields in the system over the last six months, spent over 40 hours completing training videos, and over 30 hours meeting with our Skyward consultant to get this work done, on top of their day-to-day work that they already do to support our over 1,300 employees. So with all that, they're fun, they're amazing, and they're always thinking about our students. So it's an amazing student-centered team that I get to work with, and I just appreciate you taking the time to give them appreciation, because it's, it's very well-deserved and often a role that is maybe not, gets as much gratitude and thanks as it should. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. Okay, next, we have National Physical Therapists Month, and I'm going to ask Director Bullion to read that one.
National, National Physical Therapists Month, October 2024. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October 2024 as National Physical Therapists Month. This month, we celebrate the physical therapy profession, spotlight the many benefits of physical therapy, and how physical therapists help people make changes to improve their quality of life. Physical therapists are integral members of the school-based teams that ensure a free and appropriate education for students with disabilities and prepare them for further education, employment, and independent living. School-based physical therapists support children who have a disability or a functional limitation that prevents them from engaging fully in the education system. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' physical therapist for his work supporting all students, and proclaims October 2024 to be National Physical Therapists Month, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you very much.
All right. I'm actually going to speak to this on behalf of Michelle Chuka, our Director of Student Support Services. I had to leave prematurely here tonight, but I'm reading on behalf of her, and then add a little comment myself. We're excited to honor truly our district's school physical therapist, the one that we have, Todd Leckler, a member of our special education team who goes above and beyond to support students district-wide, ages birth to 18, in accessing their education and meeting individual goals. Todd does so much, does so much more than just provide physical therapy. He's a mentor, a motivator, and an advocate. He strives daily to create a safe and inclusive environment in our schools. While the work of physical therapists within schools is a quiet and often unnoticed position by most, it is so appreciated. Todd's unwavering support and dedication makes a profound difference in the lives of our students, and for that, I'm so grateful. Thank you for celebrating school physical therapists and what they do for our school community. And just to add some commentary myself, I, when Todd first joined the district, and I don't have the specifics on number of years, I was principal at Twin Oaks Middle School at that time, and we had two programs that he provided specific support to. And since Todd's arrival here in our school district, he has been invaluable member of the team, that brings such a wonderful calm presence when he's there, working with the team of staff who support our students. But he also is somebody who, when he's absent, he has empowered our staff to do the work that they need to do to support our students on a daily basis, because obviously, he's spread across the entire district. So really important skill set that he has in delivering his work on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have National Coaches Day, and I'm going to ask Director Crosby to read that one.
I think next is.
Oh, next is, sorry. One, gosh. Operational Services Staff. Could I ask Director Atkinson to read that one?
Sure. I'm going to get bigger, so I can read it. Okay. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes September 30th through October 4th as Operational Services Staff Appreciation Week. PLSES custodians inside and outside maintenance staff provide essential support to more than 8,700 Prior Lake Savage Area students, more than 1,300 employees, and to the community members who visit and use District 719 facilities. Whereas, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 72 operational service staff. Whereas, operational service staff are responsible for the care and the maintenance of the district's 1.68 million square feet in 13 buildings and one leased space, and for over 323 acres of land. Whereas, operational service staff provide exceptional custodian grounds, maintenance repair, and delivery services for the district's buildings and grounds. Whereas, operational service staff take pride in providing students, staff, and community members with high-quality, efficient, sustainable, and safe physical environments that positively impact our students' learning experience. Whereas, operational service staff support the district's wise stewardship core value by practicing and implementing energy-saving and sustainable initiatives. Whereas, operational service staff provide clean, safe, and secure facilities and grounds, operate in a resource-efficient and sustainable manner, and provide a high level of customer service and satisfaction. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' operational service staff for supporting the education of our students and staff, and proclaim September 30th through October 24th, 2024 as Operational Service Staff Appreciation Week in the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Chair Franz, members of the board, thank you very much for this. My three months here, it doesn't seem like a long time until I've gotten to realize how much I've dug into the schools. And I truly do believe I have an exceptional team. They are doing a lot of work in a lot of different locations, and sometimes it's completely on, you don't see it. And I prefer it that way. Most of our work is something that should be behind the house. But they do, they do a lot of work every day, and I just want to make sure and share with them your appreciation for all of the work that they do. They'll appreciate it a lot. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have National Coaches Day with Director Crosby.
Okay. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October 6, 2024 as National Coaches Day. We honor the men and women who inspire us to work harder and do our best. Across the country and every community, a coach organizes teams, plans practices and training, motivates players to strive to be the best they can be. At the same time, coaches pinpoint areas for improvement and supply guidance. Every sport or competition requires a leader. More importantly, a leader who knows the game and how to drive athletes to work together as a team. Many coaches maintain a schedule for training, conditioning, and preparing athletes. Not only do they create these schedules for competition, but also for their best health. Injuries sideline athletes and upset team dynamics. Although a coach's final goal is winning, they do so through a wealth of knowledge. Coaches work to build teams that bond well, too. They develop work ethics and set standards for their athletes that many carry with them throughout their lifetime. For many athletes, coaches teach them to focus and how to reach a goal, which sometimes is not about winning. Sometimes, the achievement is an improvement, playing by the rules, or learning respect for others, themselves, or the game. Coaches represent leadership, mentors, and inspiration. Often, a coach's words will echo through an athlete's mind for years to come. During difficult times, the words motivate them forward. Rarely do these coaches even know the impact they've had on an athlete until many decades pass. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' coaches for their work supporting all students, and proclaim. and proclaims October sixth, twenty-twenty-four to be National Coaches Day in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
And I believe there's one other proclamation that'll be coming up as well, too, but um so I'll just speak to to both those proclamations at this point. If you want to go ahead and read that now, sure.
Yes, um Director Burnick, could you read the next proclamation, which is the Arts Athletics Activities Staff Appreciation Week?
Arts Athletics and Activities Staff Appreciation Week, October seventh through eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October seven through eleven, twenty-twenty-four as Athletics, Arts Athletics and Activities Staff Appreciation Week. Arts Athletics and Activities Staff provide extracurricular spo- support to our more than eighty-seven-hundred Prior Lake Savage Area Schools students. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas Arts Athletics and Activities Staff provide support, learning, and development to students outside the traditional classroom. Whereas Arts Athletics and Activities Staff instill lifelong positive traits in students such as confidence, teamwork, communication, and more than, more that can all be translated to various ex- aspects of students' lives. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area School Arts, Athletics, and Activities Staff for supporting the extracurricular activities and education for our students and declares October seventh through eleventh, twenty-twenty-four to be Arts, Athletics, and Activities Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Uh good evening, Chair Franz, Dr. Thomas, and Board Directors. My name is Jeff Marshall, I'm the Athletic and Activities Director for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Uh thank you for taking the time and energy to recognize all of our coaches, advisors, and staff members today. I work with an outstanding group of people. The amount of time, dedication, commitment, passion, and energy that our coaches and advisors put into their co-curricular activities is truly amazing. It has been shown that a coach or advisor has as much, if not even more of an impact on the growth and development of students than sometimes even their parents. In education-based athletics and activities, our coaches and advisors are constantly asked to look at their purpose, their why for what they do. Winning is always one of our goals, but it's not why we coach and lead these activities. Rather, the work is about cultivating and developing outstanding human beings through an understanding of teamwork, accountability, knowing it's okay to fail, and displaying compassion, respect, and love for those around you. It's about building relationships that are authentic, honest, and lasting. Our coaches and advisors do not do this work for the pay. If you ever figured out their hourly rate, it isn't much. But rather, they do it for the passion they have for the sport or activity and the love that they have for those students on whom they make such a large impact and difference. We are extremely lucky and honored to be able to have such outstanding individuals leading our students in these various roles, and I want to say thank you to all of them for the difference they make in so many lives. Additionally, we cannot run all of our events and competitions without the outstanding support and commitment we receive from our event workers. Many individuals from throughout the district have given up countless nights and weekends to help support and manage our events. They are often the unsung heroes in making sure all of our events run smoothly, and I want to thank all of them for their continued support and dedication. This includes the amazing grounds crew and custodial staff for the work and support they provide for our events. It also includes our high school administrators who understand the importance of co-curricular activities in the lives of our students and support the participation and inclusion of our students in these activities. And it also in- includes all of the teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff within our buildings who also continue to support these students. Lastly, I need to recognize and thank the amazing individuals who work in the Activities Office. Beth Fuller, Heather Pearson, and Lauren Albrecht are truly unbelievable in what they do. Their ability to multitask, create relationships with students and staff members, keep the office organized and running efficiently, and keep me in line while continuing to teach me new things every day is remarkable. I could not ask for a better staff, and they are one of the main reasons why I get up each morning and look forward to coming into work. All three of them are more than just coworkers. We make up our own team based on our friendship and bond that we have with each other as true colleagues and friends. Thank you to the Activities Office staff for your amazing work, commitment, dedication, and love that you show to the entire PLSAS community. And thank you to all of you as well for the support that you have continued to provide our department as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um. Um next on our list is the um Board Governance Policy. Nothing on that, right? Um and then Superintendent Relations?
Uh just real quickly, uh State of the Schools, Wednesday night, six o'clock.
Thank you. Okay. Um informational items, um the tenure PLSAS analysis. Director Fredrickson?
Thank you, Chair Franz. I would just like to provide a little more context to um a chart that's out on social media around um the tenure funding versus inflation. Um there, there is a comparison between twenty-thirteen and twenty-twenty-three, and then the chart lists a dollar amount for the change and then a percent change over that ten years. And then there's a statement made that um the um amount increased by that average percentage per year. And it actually doesn't quite work out if you do the math that way. Um and the problem is that when you look at the basic education funding formula, which is one of the lines on here, um there's two factors that make up that number, and one is enrollment and one is the general education funding formula. And the enrollment number has no correlation to um the Consumer Price Index. So when you're looking at a number that has a factor that doesn't correlate to the CPI, it's a little hard to um assume that your revenue is going to increase at a higher rate than the CPI when one of your factors doesn't include that CPI. So the chart that I've given you um breaks it out year by year. So you can see each of those um factors in the um chart and the increase over year over year. Um one of the things, so for instance, on the special education fund in the chart, they start with twenty-thirteen, the revenue was five-point-five million. And then the statement is made that um in twenty-twenty-three, it increased to thirteen million, which is a per uh one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-point-six-one percent increase. And then the comment is a special, it increased thirteen-point-nine-six percent per year. And as we've talked about, as we do our costing models, there's compounding in that. So if you start with five-point-five million and increase it thirteen-point-nine-six percent every year, then you're going to end up with twenty million, not the thirteen million. So you have to look at year over year how much the um increases are in each of those factors. So I just wanted to provide this chart for you to break out each of the thirteen year or the ten years um in each of those categories. Um just so you can see that the chart that's very condensed um doesn't quite give the whole big picture, and I just wanted you to have that some for some context. So that was all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Uh Director Fredrickson, can you share um? This chart was made because of information that was put out? Did, or is this chart, I don't recall, I don't remember, remember that this chart was made prior? So you created this in?
Yeah, it was a very condensed chart, it's just a little, little chart. Um and again, it just compares thirteen to, twenty-thirteen to twenty-twenty-three without showing the actual impact of each of those years separately. Um so for instance, when you're looking at the basic funding formula in, from twenty-thirteen to twenty-fourteen, it increased one and a half percent. Um and then the next year, it was nine-point-nine-eight percent, two-point um oh-one, two percent, one-point-nine-nine, two percent, two percent, two percent, two-point-four-five. So you can't just make the assumption that um if the differences between the first year and the tenth year is thirty-one percent, that it increased three-point-one-seven percent, has clearly it didn't.
Right. I just want, I think, I just want to say thank you for um, I didn't see the thing that was on social media. And so I really appreciate the fact that you are being um proactive in, you know, here, watching what's going on out there. I can't imagine doing all that you're doing in your department and then um having to take the additional time and resources to um, to offer um clarity. Yeah, thank you. I just really appreciate it, because I didn't see it and I can, and um, but that, that just, that's me. I didn't see it, but I really do appreciate. I think that it's been my um hope um that we're all communicating to all of the community that we, the stakeholders that we speak with, that they are seeking information from the district, from district sources. But we do know that social media is also a source of information, and sometimes that moves much faster than um some of us can. So I just appreciate your diligence and um providing um this data, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I would just, um I'd reiterate somewhat what you said, Dr. Director Boyan, I don't have any idea what you're talking about. So is it possible you could share that with our board so we can have a full understanding?
Sure, I can share the chart, it's.
Whatever we're, whatever you're referring to, I have no idea what it is, so just so we have an understand, thank you.
And I would just repeat that there's a lot of data going around social media right now, and if you want the real numbers, please contact the district and actually meet uh with them or ask for those numbers to make sure that the decisions that you're making are validated. Um that would help.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is future agenda items. So does anyone have anything for a future study session?
Um I do. So one of the things that continues to come to um, to, to my attention, or people ask questions about, is regard to class size. And I know that we'll have um finalized enrollment as of October first. And I'm wondering if it'd be possible at a study session for the board to get a really full understanding of like by building, by class, for all classes in the entire district? Because I know we've gotten an overview and there's like a range of, we're in within this range. But like, in my mind, if I know that one kindergarten class in one building is twenty-two, but then I keep hearing that another one is twenty-seven, really seeing that breaking out by school, by class, by class, I mean, and really understanding what that work um looks like as our board will help us to not only um understand what the financial impacts of a budget cut or a budget levy pass would look like, but would also help us to really kind of deflate any kind of misinformation as well that's out in the community regarding class size. So for me, I think it'd be really helpful to see that as a board, um so I wanted to bring that up, too. And I don't know how hard that is to produce.
Director Atkinson, members of boards, I know this is not up for discussion, but just for your information while you're considering it, um we do have that planned for an upcoming meeting in October to provide a class size report analysis. Um in addition to bringing some additional information to a Laker Pride um presentation coming up. So we do have that on the docket, and I appreciate the additional feedback to help inform how we will present the data to the extent we're able to.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm looking for, is just a really much a deeper dive than what we received in the past, if that's possible.
Yeah, I believe that's the Laker Showcase, correct? Scheduled for HR, yeah, so we already have that scheduled for the board. So that will be coming to a um, a Laker Showcase coming up here in a few weeks.
So is it possible? Director Thomas and Director Atkinson, to provide additional clarity, there's going to be two separate. There's the showcase that we'll be presenting, but also there's a report um scheduled as well.
Sorry.
So no, I was just asking, is it possible to get something more in-depth than what we received in the past?
Dr. Atkinson and Chair Franz, I'm not sure how much we can discuss at this time, but if, if we can continue discussing, is that appropriate for right now or?
So I guess what I can offer, um I can get, we have this already as an agenda topic upcoming, and um I can get a better understanding when we connect um tomorrow. And um just get a sense of what the ask is and um, so I, I anticipate we're going to have a pretty comprehensive report um that's coming forward, and then we'll all better understand the nuances that you're asking about.
Okay.
Not mistaken, that's also predicated on the final enrollment number.
Right, that's why I mentioned after October first.
Yeah, mm-hmm, and that's why it's scheduled for October later. Um, okay, anything else? Okay.
Are we gonna, when are we going to get another budget update? So um I know that we're waiting for audit numbers, but is it possible to get a financial update as we move forward to the next month?
So the audit will be presented at the October seventh board meeting, um they'll be here. Um we'll go back to the monthly financial statements once that's complete. Or the fourteenth, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, with that, uh we can adjourn for the evening. Uh I don't have to ask for a motion, um just thank you very much for your patience and staying to almost ten PM at night.
Thank you.